Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Auburn zoning board of appeals meeting, Thursday, June 20th. I'll now call our meeting to order approximately 7:10. The meeting is being recorded, brought to us through live on local access programming. Is there anyone that is also recording the meeting in the audience? They're seeing none. This time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, each of the board members, please refrain from asking any questions regarding all matters discussed this evening without first being granted consent through the chair. So we have two hearings before us this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and read the applicant on the first hearing, a 7:00 PM applicant, Auburn Industrial Development Corp., appealing the issuance of a building permit without a public hearing under sections 9.4, 6.15, 9.4, 8.1, 10.1.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws, Massachusetts General Law 48, Section 7, 8, and 15, on property located at 33 Sword Street, MAP 11, Parcel 7. As a point of order, an administrative item, there are four board members before the applicants this evening, which would constitute any ruling to require a supermajority, which would mean anything that would be voted on this evening would require a supermajority in all four board members voting in the affirmative. With that said, for anything to be moving forward, you'd have to receive a vote unanimous of all four board members. And with that said, the applicant certainly would have the option, given what we comprise of the board and absent members this evening, could certainly have the option to withdraw without prejudice and request a continuance at a future meeting where there may be additional board members and you wouldn't be restricted to unanimous vote. And that's on the applicants to decide. So I'll give you a moment to think about that as we call the hearings into discussion. You would have the option to step back, because anything that would need approval this evening would require a supermajority. But if you have any questions on that, I can entertain those questions when your hearing is before us. It's a matter of procedure, and for the point of clarification, before I open a public hearing for the first applicant, I'm going to seek the board members, my colleagues' indulgence on getting some additional background on this application and getting some insight from our building commissioner. And the reason for that is that we've never had such an application in my tenure on the board that's requiring a public hearing for what appears to be an issued building permit. And I want to make sure that any discussions that this board would have would be in the purview of what our remit is. In other words, I don't know that it would be within our authority to open up a public hearing for anything that isn't essentially asking for relief for one of our bylaws. And so I need clarification, quite frankly, and I'd ask that the other board members seek the same clarification on whether or not this applicant is asking for relief on a particular bylaw in this matter, because that's the jurisdiction of this board. And that's our only jurisdiction. So Caleb, I'm going to ask you if you would indulge the board with a little bit of education on this applicant and the process that I just described.
Through the chair, so I will say that the applicant does have the ability to appeal my decision to the Board of Appeals. I'm not sure that the application is worded correctly, because a public hearing is not required for a building permit. So I think clarification is needed from the applicant as to whether they're appealing my issuance of the building permit, or whether they're appealing the fact that the planning board issued a minor modification without notification, which is their right to do. I don't believe this board has the ability to overturn the planning board's decision to issue a minor modification. The planning board rules and regs say that the planning board has the authority to issue minor modifications without notifying abutters. That's what took place. So I think clarification is needed from the applicant as to what exactly this appeals, what they're appealing. They do have the ability to appeal my decision to issue the building permit to this board. They don't have the ability to appeal the planning board's decision to this board.
Okay. As I understand it, so as the application reads before me, this is an application to appeal the issuance of a building permit without a public hearing. So essentially, a challenge of you issuing the building permit, which this board would have the authority to hear. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what I would then do, I'd like to hear from the other board members to see if that satisfies the question that we would have before the applicant, before I give an applicant an opportunity to speak to that question specifically. So I'll roll through the board. Mr. Cole?
Caleb, I need to, with your indulgence, I believe on the brief that you have just given me, that the permit has not been issued.
The building permit has been issued.
It has been, okay. I'm looking at something as of February 7th, that's why I asked the question.
It was denied originally on February 7th, but then it was issued on March 6th.
Okay, and from what you've just said, the planning board, any appeal cannot be to the planning board.
This board would not have the authority to overturn the planning board's decision.
Was it indeed the planning board's decision to deny the permit or to issue it?
The planning board made a decision to modify the original site plan approval without notifying abutters. They felt that the modification was minor, did not require notification to the abutters.
And the planning board, because this is not necessarily a zoning issue, but the planning board has the authority to issue that permit?
What happened was the planning board issued a site plan approval with conditions. The conditions were not met, so I denied the building permit on February 7th. The applicant for the planning board went back to the planning board for a modification. The planning board deemed the modification minor, not requiring notification. So they amended the order of the site plan approval without notifying abutters as a minor modification, and at that point, I issued the building permit.
And are we a fall-down, quote, bucket to have the applicant come before us because of something now that...
As I said, they have the ability to come to you to appeal my decision to issue the building permit if they feel that it was an error. They do not have the ability to come to you to appeal the planning board's decision.
And what would we be basing our decision on, this board? What would we be basing a decision on? We'd be questioning your authority to issue it?
I guess you would have to listen to both sides of the story and then make an informed decision at that point, myself, if they in fact intend to appeal my decision to issue the building permit. I think the first step would be to find out what their appeal is actually for, because...
Without anything to do with zoning?
It is zoning, because in our zoning bylaw, in state law, it says that any decision can be appealed to the zoning board of appeal.
All right. But not a matter of zoning, per se? Just that one narrow, narrow item, it's not a matter of zoning here?
Any decision that I make can be appealed to the ZBA.
Okay.
Mr. Cole? I think I'd have to hear what... Yeah, I don't... Do I give you an opportunity to ask the building commissioner? Yeah. No? Okay. Mr. Jones?
Any follow-up for the building commissioner?
No.
At this time?
All right, very good, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, because I was reading, I asked, pardon, the applicant, have they said that they are in tune with us?
So what on your head? Thank you, Mr. Cole, that's a good point. So two points I'd bring forward, is I would take a motion to open a public hearing and then bring the applicant before us, have them introduce themselves, and then I would ask them to decide on the determination of whether or not they'd like to move forward with a board of four, and then we can weigh in for the question again.
Very good.
That would be my process.
Motion to open?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Very good. So is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you approach the lectern and state your name, sir, for the record?
Good evening, my name's Dale Kiley. I am counsel with Bourgeois White in Worcester, and I represent Auburn Industrial Development Corporation, the appellant.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. And so Fred, I'd like to take it in order to give you full opportunity from the voting perspective. So as we comprise a board of four, as I discussed earlier, any vote in favor would need to be reached unanimously, and it would be you as the applicant. It would truly be your decision if you'd like to move forward this evening.
Yes, we're prepared to move forward.
Okay, very good. So you're prepared to move forward with that?
We are, sir.
Okay, very good. And so I would like to get to a place where I'd like to hear you fully, but I hope you can understand, based on the jurisdiction of this board and how we're comprised, I want to move forward diligently, and I'm sure you can appreciate that. I'd like to ask you a very specific question as it relates to your hearing. Is your application succinctly to challenge the building permit that the building commissioner has issued?
Yes, it's, we're challenging the validity of the building permit as issued, and I respectfully disagree that it doesn't fall under zoning, because 9.4 of the zoning bylaws for the Town of Auburn require a site plan review. So we're also challenging the fact that there was an effective site plan review that took everything into consideration, so we think that's...
Before you weigh in, Barstur, again, I apologize, and I appreciate, I do intend to give you, given your response, I intend to give you an opportunity to plead your case. But I want, just for the record, to confirm, you are not at this time challenging the modifications that the planning board made to the application and thereby not conducting a public hearing. Is that accurate?
We are challenging the validity of the building permit based on due process claims that the zoning bylaw was not followed. So we're challenging the validity of the building permit.
Okay, very good. All right, so, okay, so for clarity, if I may, before I open it up again, so Caleb, as explained from my view, humbly, it appears that they are challenging the issuance of the building permit, which would be the former, not the latter, in our earlier discussion, and thereby would fall under the jurisdiction of this board.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that confirmation. So with some of those technicalities aside and the preamble, I would like to give you an opportunity, sir, to speak.
Okay, so FW Web sought a building permit for changes on Sword Street. As part of their requirement under the zoning bylaws, they had to have a site plan review, which they did. It was duly noticed, and people had their say. The, they made some changes. Originally, all the activity was to take place on the parcel. So all the backing up of the trucks, the parking, everything was to take place off of the road. The building inspector and the planning board view the changes that occurred after, the amendment to the site plan, as minor. We dispute that it's a minor change. They cite that it's within the planning board's purview to determine whether it's minor or major, and in this case, it's not just a parking revision, it's an entire access and egress. One of the things that has to happen under the site plan review in the zoning bylaw is a consideration of traffic safety and the impact to the traffic in the surrounding buildings. That wasn't taken into consideration in the first hearing, which brings us to the basis that the second hearing should have been announced to the abutters. So the abutters didn't get an opportunity, because they didn't oppose the backing of the trucks and the parking, because it occurred on-site. Now it's going to affect their businesses, it's going to affect traffic, it's going to affect public safety, and at that point, we contend that due process and fair notice to all required that a new hearing be posted and an opportunity for those people to be heard. That's the basis of the validity of the issuance of the building permit, because if the building permit's issued without the ability for others to be heard, it violates due process. We do have a case on point that says that, so that would be the basis of the legal challenge to the validity of the issuance of the building permit. And I understand and I respect the board's position regarding all the factual issues, but if you need a further understanding of why it's not a minor change and why it's a major change, we do have a traffic expert who has all the diagrams to show that. Further, the proposal that was presented at the planning board stage for the site plan review could not possibly have operated in the way that they showed it to operate. The trucks, so now the trucks have to turn around and back onto the site from the road. And the drawings that they showed and they prepared have them backing over curvings and not being able to make the turns correctly, so as a practical matter and as a factual matter, there were problems. So we challenge the validity of the building permit at this stage, and we believe that the zoning board of appeals does have the authority to give us the relief. We're requesting that the zoning board of appeals invalidate the building permit as issued and either remand it back to the planning board for a site plan review as required by your zoning bylaws, that incorporates a full hearing for all the abutters in the public to be heard on the traffic safety issue. So that would be the basis of our appeal here today, and if you would like to hear from the traffic expert with all the factual matters as to why this is major, not minor, we're prepared to do that for you today.
Thank you very much. Other than your expertise of the gentleman that's here to speak on traffic specifically, is there anyone else in your team that would like to speak on the case?
Hello, my name is Marty Reisner. I'm here representing the Auburn Industrial Development Corporation. Here is one of the owners and also the manager of the company. We own the property, the building, that's located adjacent to the 33 Sword Street building and project. And in addition to that, we own the buildings located directly across the street on A, B, and C streets in the industrial park. And we have tenants at 31 Sword Street, we have tenants in the industrial park, some of which are here tonight. And we're here to, first and foremost, to protect AID, our company's rights as abutters and owners, and also our tenants' rights to make sure that they have proper access and egress to their facilities and that it's not interrupted, which we believe this modified site plan, the conditions of this site plan and their loading plan in particular, will create safety concerns and will create access and egress concerns to the properties where our tenants are located. So I have a responsibility to fight for our company and fight for our tenants to make sure that the site plan doesn't screw up their operation. So I'd like to introduce Paul Fergel from McMahon Transportation Engineers. We engaged him to perform a traffic study.
Before we get there, because I think that those are specific questions, I will submit to the validity of whether it's a major or minor, and as before this board, our jurisdiction specifically speaks to the validity of the permit, not whether or not we're going to debate major or minor changes. If we're going to get on that road, I will tell you that that is not in my jurisdiction this evening, and that's a planning board topic.
Dale, I think you should...
And I do agree with the board's position on that, but the difference between a major and a minor change is what hinges on the validity of the permit. Because if the planning board deems it a minor change, then there's no hearing and they did things the right way. If it's a major change and it materially affects the site plan review and the parameters in the site plan review, specifically the safety, which is 9.4.11 or something like that, they're supposed to consider the safety. If they haven't done that, it's a major change, and that would invalidate the permit, so that's why we want to be sure that we impress upon you that if it's a major change, that invalidates the permit, and it should have gone through another hearing process. And I think I heard them say that the minor change is up to the planning board to determine, and that the building permit issued after the minor change is valid. I didn't hear them say that if it was a major substantial material change and they didn't do a hearing, a subsequent hearing, for people with due notice and an opportunity to be heard, what we call due process, that it would invalidate the permit. And if the permit is actually invalid, you would have to go through the process again. So that's, am I explaining that in a way that...
It's clear to me, and I'll let the board members just question you as well. I will tell you succinctly that as we open this with the question of whether or not your challenge was with substantive or insubstantive change of the plan, or whether or not you were challenging the building permit. I understand your argument, but I would suggest that, and I want to get clarification from the building commissioner, but what I want to determine is, irrespective of major or minor change, if this building permit were approved, your initial argument to me, frankly, seems to be with whether or not it's a major or minor change, which is not... I mean, I understand that you're translating that directly to whether or not that validates or invalidates the building permit, and I'll get the building commissioner's side on that, but I understand what you're saying, but I'm starting to understand that your challenge, quite frankly, in my view, is with the substantive or insubstantive change at the planning board level.
Which invalidates the permit, which is why we're here. We asked for zoning relief from the building inspector, the code enforcement officer under the zoning bylaw. We asked him to enforce the zoning bylaw, which requires a determination by the planning board on the site plan review as to whether it impacts traffic or not. That determination was not made at the lower level, so it's a violation of your zoning bylaw, which is, and from that violation, a building permit was issued, so...
Let me stop you there, because I do appreciate you trying to thought. If you're suggesting that the violation to our bylaw was that it was a wrong determination of being a minor change, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm suggesting that the violation of the bylaw is the fact that there was no hearing once the site plan was determined to not be good. So the building inspector said earlier that he denied a building permit because the site plan was not addressing the zoning, right? So if we agree that he denied it originally, then it goes to the planning board again. That second time, if it doesn't meet the zoning bylaw, it should have been posted again, and notifications should have been sent out, and that violates your zoning bylaw.
Okay, so I'd like to isolate our discussion to the second permit that was in fact issued and granted, and not the first, it was returned.
Correct.
Because I understand the process, it was returned, but what I'd really like to do is take a step back and learn a little bit more, give my board members an opportunity to ask you some questions. But beyond that, before we get to the board members, a gentleman, good with me reaching back to Caleb for a couple of questions specifically at this time?
Yeah, absolutely.
So Caleb, my challenge here is that what's been discussed is the challenge to the permit, it invalidates the permit. But what I'm trying to bridge is, you know, when that permit was issued, it sounds as if the challenge really is whether or not this was a major or minor substantive change at the planning board level. At least that's how I'm interpreting that component of it. I'd like to get your perspective on when it was issued, at what point would, in your view, would invalidate that decision?
So if I may, through the chair, I have my timeline that I can lay out and just put a little light on the situation. Conservation issued an order of conditions for this project on October 22nd, 2018. Planning board issued site plan approval with conditions on November 27th, 2018. I received a building permit application on January 14th, 2019. On February 7th, I denied the permit for failure to meet the conditions of the site plan approval. Those conditions were that they needed to have signed easements with the abutting property owner to access their loading docks by traversing over his property. Those easements weren't in place, so I denied the permit. The building permit applicant decided, rather than pursue the easements, to come up with another plan. So they went back to the planning board with a different plan, not using the neighboring property. They decided to submit turning radii, showing that they could access their docks strictly by being on their property. Planning board deemed that to be a minor modification. They moved forward and they issued that minor modification. That was on February 26th. They all, the applicant also went back to conservation, because there was conditions that the town engineer had stipulated that he wanted done, and some of that work involved work inside the, inside the no-work zone, I believe, so they had to go back to conservation. They were doing that. None of that work inside that affected the building permit, so on March 6th, I issued the building permit. Because site plan, the planning board had already issued their minor modification. The planning board decides whether it's minor or major, I have no say over that. Even if I don't, even if I disagree with them, there's nothing I can do about that. They followed the steps that they were supposed to follow, and I issued the building permit, plain and simple.
And that was on March 6th?
March 6th.
Okay. A gentleman, would you like to step in and ask a few questions of either the applicant or Caleb? Mr. Cole?
I would opt for more discovery.
Okay. So a minor change doesn't require notifying abutters?
The planning board rules and regulations say that the planning board can deem a change minor in nature, and that it does not require notification of abutters, and that's what took place.
So I remember this came in front of this board.
Yeah, they probably had a special permit before this board.
Yeah, I remember this originally. So, yeah, so traffic should not have increased from the first, you know, plan to the second?
Yeah, I wouldn't even take a stab at that. They had, they have traffic engineers, and they had, they submitted stamped turning radias plans, and the planning board approved them. I don't get involved in what they approve and what they call minor or major.
Okay, so they did have traffic standards?
They did.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. On what basis does the appellant conclude that the turning radii submitted are not based on reality?
Well, if you look at the plans, you can see the plan itself showing the churning of the trucks has it going over two curvings in order to get to its location for the first loading dock. It brings it out onto the road and has to make at least four separate turns to get onto its property, because the property line is so close. When the first truck is parked in the loading dock, so the first two loading docks closest to the road are for larger tractor-trailer type units, 40 foot long. When they're in that position, they come right up to the property line, so the box trucks that park in the four loading docks behind that either can't get out or can't get in, and they'll have to go onto somebody else's property to do that, which is problematic. And then they didn't do an analysis of the trucks coming in, so if you are blocking the first two 40-foot-long bays, the trucks that need to get into the back are going to... the trucks that need to get into the back are going to be stacked up on the road now, which now impacts traffic coming off of B Street and C Street. You can't make the turn because there are bollards there. So I don't think they did a traffic study. They did a turning radii study to show that they could get onto their property without breaching the property line, thereby not needing the easements. And if you look at the documents themselves, you'll see that it contradicts their ability to do that. And so that would be the basis of why we believe it's, it's a major impact and their documents refute themselves. And also on that point, since the board raised the issue that they were here on a special permit, they needed 100 parking spaces according to the, the bylaw. They said they, they came in and reduced it to 80. But if you look at their own documents, it only shows 70. So that's the kind of things that are coming in front of the town. And we think that FW Web's not acting in good faith on any of these things. So that would be the basis of remanding and reviewing again and giving people the opportunity to be heard on the issue. I mean, it may be that after another hearing, the board finds that there's no significant impact and there's no, there's no safety issue in their view, but due process should have been followed and they should have been given an opportunity to say something about that before it was granted.
So the, the first meeting for the first permit, were you guys at that meeting?
Yes.
And you had no?
You were at that first meeting, right?
No issues?
No, because at the time, we were trying to work out an easement between them. That's, they presented to the, the planning board at the time that they were trying to work on easements, which didn't, didn't happen. The negotiations fell through and they didn't get the easements that they were seeking. So now they had to come back and try to figure out a way to get it all done on their own property. So that was the change.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do have a follow-up. You, in your brief, there are five remedies sought, four of which involve the ZBA exercising some authority over the planning board. I'm wondering what the basis for your belief that the ZBA has such power over the planning board might be?
I, I believe that remanding it for further review is fully within the zoning board of appeals purview. As a violation of your zoning bylaw, you have the ability to say the planning board violated their obligations under the zoning bylaw and remanding it back to the zoning, the planning board for a hearing. And ordering a hearing and notice to a butters is just another zoning bylaw provision. I mean, that's a, and that's a, the statute 40A says that butters have standing within 300 feet and they all should be notified and have due process rights. So that's just, I, I believe that's within the ZBA's purview also.
Nothing further? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, in full step, because we may have additional questions for you. I just wanted to ask, is anyone here representing FW Web this evening? Okay. Are there any butters that would like to speak this evening?
There are butters here. Does anybody want to be heard?
I just want to make sure that anyone that would like to speak has an opportunity to be said.
Was notice given to FW Web?
All butters have been notified.
Hi, Sandro D. Donato, S&amp;S Contractors Supply. I did not have an opportunity to look at the traffic study in depth, but what was presented, I'm located, I'm situated at the end of B Street and traffic affects me going down C Street and coming up B Street because they use that loop around. So what concerns me, since I have three overhead doors and I have trucks going in and out, looking at the traffic study and the way the trucks stack up, it's going to divert a lot of traffic down C Street and coming around the building and it's going to affect my ability to load. We do a lot of prep work out in the yard. So I'm a little concerned that if traffic does come down there, it's going to impact that, our customers' ability to come in and out. I have two months to decide if I want to sign another lease for another five years. And if this isn't addressed, I'm going to have to rethink that. That's pretty much my position.
Thank you for speaking, sir. I appreciate you being here. Any other questions from the board?
How many trucks is Web going to have coming in there?
Will Thomas with Masterwinds. We're a longstanding tenant at the Auburn Industrial Park and we take up a big portion of the back of the, of the industrial park. Our concerns are, we have a lot of vehicles that come in during the beginning and the end of the day and they come through Sword Street. They use B and C Street, A a little bit. And more important, we have customers that come in all day, similar to the other gentleman. And we have a lot of trucks that come in all day. So if Sword Street's backed up with trucks waiting to, to go on and come off, it can cause a major issue for ourselves and our customers and our ability to continue our business the way it is today. So that's, you know, our concern. Also, we have, you know, employees that are coming and going throughout the day, not just the big trucks and not just during the beginning, the end of the work week, that I wouldn't want to have issues with traffic at the end of the road.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you speaking. Caleb, if I can ask you a follow-up question. On the permit that's been issued, and it was issued in March, correct?
Correct.
So March 6th. So on the permit that was issued, and issued for the site plan that was provided, on that site plan, are the, sorry, lost my train of thought. Are the, the easements that required granting, were those satisfied?
They were not. The applicant chose to go another route, which was turning radius, showing turn radiuses on a stamp plan that said they could, they could access their docks without, without going over the neighbor's property.
Okay. And from that, from that, the planning board determined that that would be appropriate based on a minor change?
Yeah, the planning board issued the minor modification on February 26th.
Okay. All right.
Which included the stamped turning radii plan.
Okay. Any, any other discussion or any other questions? Anything else you'd like to share, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'm hearing an awful lot about this, the traffic pattern and so forth. What was the current or the previous use of this building that FW Web wants to go into? What was the previous use of it?
If you approach her because they can't hear you and that needs to be recorded. Thank you.
So we've engaged a professional traffic engineer to look at the site plan, to look at the loading, to look at this turning radii. So if there's any questions about traffic, our traffic engineer is the appropriate person to direct those questions.
That wasn't, that wasn't his question. His question was previous years.
My question was, what was, what was in the building? What was the functioning business in that building prior to?
Warehouse distribution.
What was it?
Warehouse distribution, Imperial Distributors.
And there were there trailer trucks coming and going?
Yes.
Were they going, were the trailer trucks that were coming and going, were they, were they using what was initially to be considered easement area?
Dale, I don't know if I'm allowed to comment on that, you know?
Well, if you, if you couldn't get together on an easement, you must know where the easement is.
There's a, there's a...
Proposed easement.
Yes, there's a proposed easement area.
So if you saw trailer trucks coming and going, were they using that proposed easement area?
At different times, there were different uses, there were different tenants, and so.
Did you ever see trailer trucks going over the proposed easement area?
There's a property line between the two buildings. So...
And the two buildings that we're referring to would be 33 and 35 or 33 and 31?
Yes. So I believe the building was reconfigured in this, right? The building's being remodeled, right? They, they made changes to the building, which changed the configuration. So trucks were going over it before, but this building has been changed and modified. So that affects the area available for trucks now. But the easement wasn't a defined easement, it was permissive use of a common area. So it's not defined, so you can't say there's a specific area that was an easement. It was allowed permissive use for them to do. Once, and this was going to be coming now with this project, they were going to do the same thing. It was going to be permissive use through the grant of an easement. And the difference is compensation, really. So when they couldn't come to terms, the configuration, the new configuration of the building and the space that they had now that limited them was the basis for not having enough room to do what they need to do.
You know, I'm, I'm having a little bit difficult time conceptualizing these areas. Do you have a plan that could be put up there that we can see?
On that road, and, and, no, thank you, sir. And I, I do want to give you an opportunity to speak, but I want to rein back on, on what the jurisdiction of this board has specifically because I want to make sure that we stay in scope. So what's before us this evening is whether or not we want to rule on the validity of the permit that Caleb issued to move this project forward. And so I, before we bring a traffic expert up and, I'm not doing it on purpose to cite you because I'm sure you have great expertise to share, I want to, I want to contain our discussion succinctly to the argument that the issuance of the permit was essentially in violation of our bylaws. Can you vet that for me specifically for two reasons? One, I want to make sure that I completely hear you and give you an opportunity to present that position. Because quite frankly, I'm, I'm just challenged by transferring the challenge. I understand that you disagree that this is a major change. Ergo, the major change would dictate that this goes to a public hearing. And I understand your challenge to that piece of it. For me, it doesn't translate directly to, from our bylaw perspective, if our, and I'll just give you my position so that you can argue and challenge it.
Sure.
My position would, would be, and I would ask the board members to consider, through our process and our bylaws succinctly, if our planning board makes a determination that it's a minor change, that's in within their jurisdiction to make that determination. Thereby, that minor change gets translated to the site plan. And they've determined that based on our law, our bylaw, that that minor change does not ensue a public hearing. And that information gets translated to our building inspector, our building commissioner, who thereby has what's before him to issue an appropriate permit based on what comes out of the planning board. So my challenge, and I'll be very transparent because I want to give you every opportunity to argue this. My, my challenge is, if we followed our process internally in town and our building commissioner followed what came out of our planning board, is your argument not with the planning board and their determination of major versus minor change?
First, I appreciate the opportunity. Major and minor is not in your bylaw. A major or minor view is simply the planning board's own internal rule. There's nothing in the bylaw that says if it's a minor change or a major change, then we don't need to come back and give notice to anybody. So it's simply the planning board's view. So it, it doesn't come under zoning. So I would say that that finding is challengeable as outside of zoning. In addition, your zoning bylaw does make reference to the, the planning board making specific findings in their site plan. They have to make a specific finding that it doesn't impact safety. That finding wasn't made either as an additional violation of the zoning bylaw. So what we're asking the zoning board of appeals to do is to make sure that the other boards that have something to do with zoning are doing things in the, in the way that they're supposed to be doing it. Our view is that they didn't. And that invalidates the building permit as it sits and it should be reviewed.
And just one follow-up question because I appreciate you articulating that and focusing on process versus bylaw. So what bylaw specifically invalidates, what bylaw was violated were not, were not followed to violate essentially or render the building permit invalid in your view?
9.4, which requires, it's the entire site plan review bylaw, or it's 9.4 and the various sections. It's where you get to the end where they talk about traffic safety and ingress and egress and parking and things like that. And then further on in 9.4, when it talks about enforcement of the zoning bylaw, it requires the planning board to make specific findings. And, and they didn't make a specific finding in this case in either one of their hearings. So we would view that as a violation of the bylaw itself.
Okay. For me, that's very helpful. And so I appreciate you isolating. So your, your position would be that the site plan approval in 9.4, in total, that process was, was not followed and thereby that, that would be your challenge to the building permit being issued?
Correct. That would be, that would be the challenge for the, for the challenging of the validity of the building permit as it stands right now.
Okay. I appreciate that. And again, it truly was my effort, not just to state my opinion, but to give you full opportunity to, to help us understand your position.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, if Web came to terms on the easement, you would have had no problem with this plan?
Well, if, if Web came to terms on an easement, they would be totally off-road. There wouldn't be any safety or emergency issue at all. It's the fact that they, not that they walked away from the easement, but their, their proposed fix for that doesn't work and it impacts safety and traffic in the surrounding area. So that's the basis of the, the challenge.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Going down the road, I was going to go down previous to this. The change in the plan seems to hinge on minor or major change, but that hinges on the easement. So if the plan was changed to have no easement required and that plan precipitated a positive response from the building commissioner to where the permit was issued.
I'm following you and I, I agree with you. Yes, I believe that was the course.
Okay. So if that permit was issued based upon the fact that there was, there was no easement involved, there is currently no easement, the place had, was operating without an easement, and my question was with, did the appellant ever see a tractor trailer going back and forth, then no minor change, which means no challenge to, challenging the building permit because there is no minor or major change then?
I understand. Then your fault.
So that I'm, I'm seeing that this, I'm going to say, I almost want to say loosely hinges, but it doesn't. It's not loosely. It just hinges on whether there's a, an easement or not an easement.
Okay. So Mr. Cole, if I can submit, and if I may, so there's not an easement in the current.
Right.
And Caleb, do you have any other comments that you would like to share before we move forward? I would, would like to propose, and I'll, and I've got a state of caution, but I would like to propose that this gentleman who has some traffic expertise have an opportunity to share some of their information. But I want caution under the guise of, we will not be here to debate whether or not the traffic discussion, the traffic analysis is appropriate or not. That would be, I mean, I want to give you an opportunity to be heard, That would be, I mean, I want to give you an opportunity to be heard, certainly, but that would be a debate and a discussion from the planning board. And I want to respect their authority, that they would take a look at traffic flow and determine whether or not appropriate or not. But I'm not about silencing or sitting anyone down. So I want, and Mr. Cole, it may go to your line of questioning and reveal some things in the decision process, and so I definitely want to.
No doubt.
Caleb, before we get there, do you have anything to add at this point?
I guess to the chairman, my only comment would be that this board has no jurisdiction. If he makes a great argument that the traffic doesn't work and the turn radius don't work, there's no authority of the zoning board of appeals at this hearing to overturn the planning board, so.
That is my complaint. I understand.
I have no objection to anyone speaking. I just wanted to make that clear.
I appreciate that thoroughly. I would offer that level of discussion to satisfy our board members, to satisfy your line of questioning, Mr. Cole, but I would offer, Mr. Jones, you had something to.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Kylie. Correct me if I'm wrong, but to appeal a planning board decision regarding a site plan, you would go to the superior court?
Yes, we would file for a review in the superior court. It's called social inquiry review. And with that, just for your clarification, I don't want to make any threats or speak out of turn, but with that would be a request for a jump of relief, which would mean they can't do anything on their property until the matter's decided. So that would be, process-wise, that would be what would happen.
Thank you.
Satisfied, Mr. Jones? Okay. Thank you, sir. And so with that caution, sir, I would like you to come up and introduce yourself, as at least one of our board members certainly has traffic questions, but I would do it under the guise of our authority would not extend through making determinations on an argument of pro or con on a traffic. Yes, sir, by all means, certainly. You've been certainly very patient in listening, and I do want to appreciate your expertise.
Thank you.
And so with that caution, I would just, Mr. Cole, if you want to follow along with your line of questioning on this subject matter.
I just want to scan this.
Certainly can't, is there an easel over there?
Good evening. My name is Paul Fergal. I'm with McMahon Associates. I'm a senior project manager with the firm. I have about 20 years of experience in traffic engineering, transportation engineering. We've been hired to look at the proposed plan as well as how it relates to their existing operations. Right now, you have a handout that addresses what we did in detail in terms of traffic counts that we conducted at the existing 43 Sword Street site, which focused on counting vehicles entering and exiting, both cars as well as trucks, and also understanding what time of day that occurred. We counted traffic, there were two days that we counted traffic, June 10th and June 11th, which was Monday and Tuesday. As part of that effort, we wanted to understand really how many cars are coming in, how many cars are staying on site, as well as trucks? How many tractor-trailer trucks are coming in? How many box trucks are coming in and leaving at the same time? So as part of our effort, we summarized that entry and exit on that figure two that you have. And what this matters is, we're trying to compare existing operations on site and the demand of trucks and vehicles that they have on the current 43 address and how that relates to their proposed relocation to 33 Sword Street. The first thing we were able to find out is the amount of box trucks and the amount of tractor-trailer trucks that are being stored on site as well as exiting and entering. To summarize all the data you see, you'll notice there are several columns that identify on-site calculation. So from a box truck standpoint, we have counted basically six box trucks that would be parked on site based on their existing movements, and also two tractor-trailer trucks that would be there at the same time. So that's a condition that we witnessed basically before the hours of 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And why that makes a difference with the future relocation is the fact that if you turn to figure three, what do we see? They have a site condition and building reconstruction of their docks to only account for how many? Four trucks, four box trucks that is, and two tractor-trailer trucks. Well, the problem that that creates in the morning, assuming that a tractor-trailer truck is parked, two of them are parked at the same time, and a box truck wants to leave, they're not going to be able to do it. They don't have the real estate within their property to make a turn out of that site without hitting one of the trucks. So that's a safety concern that we have. But it goes beyond them exiting the site. If you look at figure four, this depicts a vehicle coming out, or a truck, tractor-trailer truck, leaving A Street. And the vehicle is looking to make a right-hand turn from A Street down to Sword Street. And if there's ever another truck that's parked waiting for space in those occupied docks, there's potential for it to be hit or in conflict with the vehicle that is exiting not only A Street, but also adjacent driveways too, that are in close proximity to the existing layout there. So that's one potentiality that can exist. Similarly, if we go down to B Street and you have a truck that's, say, just one truck parked, tractor-trailer dock one, which is where they designated their tractor-trailer truck movements, and you had vehicles that were waiting to get on to those docks, they might be stacking in front of B Street and creating a conflict scenario where a vehicle that's turning out of B Street either hits the truck or it hits the bollards that are on the southeast corner of that intersection that showed those callouts. Figure six actually shows the complicated movement that needs to be made in order for a vehicle to back in. And one of the things you'll notice is the proximity of the tractor-trailer truck that's already parked and the vehicle that's already trying to get in. So the vehicle that is on Sword Street trying to get into dock one while dock two is occupied is going to have the likelihood of hitting that vehicle that's parked at dock B, or two, excuse me. And the reasoning is, they're not going to be able to straighten out properly to allow proper access to dock one. So there's a pattern here with the limited space that's provided. The previous two figures that I showed, they don't only identify issues with vehicles exiting B Street or A Street, they also identify the potential for traffic that's already in a stream on Sword Street. And to give you an example of something that I personally experienced, I was trying to take a right-hand turn into the 31 Sword Street access, which is. There was a truck that was actually parked in a similar fashion as figure six identifies the starting position. In order for me to bypass that truck, what did I have to do? I had to basically cross the W-07 line, go in oncoming traffic. And by the way, my sight lines were quite limited, because you have a tractor-trailer truck that is waiting for something, and they were parked there. It was just luck of the draw, but when I arrived, the first time I ever saw the site, there was a truck parked there. I couldn't see around the truck. So I blindly went across the W-07 line, and I also had a difficult time making a right-hand turn, because the truck saw me there and it started moving. So now we're introducing additional traffic stress to Sword Street, which didn't exist before in those terms, because of the reconfiguration of the existing building. So in a nutshell, that summarizes the traffic study, where we counted existing trucks accessing the site. We then looked at the future site, see how does that add up? And one more key point that's in the study that I really spoke about earlier was the number of parking spaces. In the world of traffic engineers, we like ratios, we like figures, factors that we use to determine how many trips is a future site going to develop. Right now, they have about 36,000 square feet of warehouse space that exists at their 43 Sword Street site. Well, they're more than doubling their capacity of space at 33 Sword Street. Typically, one of the most, the variable when it comes to trip generation, additional traffic that we would see, is based on square footage or site size, or if you're doing a mall, you know there's going to be a million square feet. We base our trip generation off that. Well, if you're increasing the warehouse, something's got to increase for a bigger space. Your operations are going to provide what? More storage, more activity, and even more employees, as they admitted in a hearing previously that they would have on site. Well, with the parking space, we would argue that, we think that they have a challenge, even with the current count of parking spaces that they provide at Sword Street to be applied on the future conditions. We didn't increase any truck traffic too, by the way. So we assume they would have the same amount of trucks. What if there's more trucks as a result of additional activity on site? Now you're stressing Sword Street further to provide staging and whatnot. So from a vehicular standpoint, passenger cars, we think that there should be some justification for variance that they previously had, which only explained how their increasing space and the typical industry approach to parking spaces, or the need for them, the occupancy, is simply based on the number of users that come in. So just in the morning, we counted about 70 cars coming in. They have 60 spaces. Not all of them need a parking space. Some of them might get dropped off during an hour, but in a world of traffic engineering, you're getting close to your capacity, and you're more than doubling your future site. So that should be also addressed.
Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate your comments. I just have one quick question, and then the board members ask any follow-up questions you have. I see your, the packet that you had handed us, the brief, is dated today, June 20th, and that may be just demarcation of this meeting date. Was this analysis prepared and shared with the Webb applicant during the site plan review process?
No.
Okay. So this is the current study after that took place?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate your comments, sir. Mr. Cole, I just ask if you have any follow-up to the information that was shared, under the guise of the traffic flow, with the caution that this really is out of our scope?
Yes. And so, I mean, it's really good. It doesn't provide what I, where I was going with my questions. Does give me a very good overview of it, and that's what I needed, so I thank you very much. I guess I'm going to go back to what I have said, that if the previous tenant were there and were operating, the difference between a minor change and a major change, validating or invalidating a building permit that was issued, and that minor or major change would be tied to a. Thank you. Yes. Would be tied to the easement. And that would essentially be one of the principal things that would validate or invalidate a building permit. And knowing that I'm sure that the previous tenant had the same type of configuration, the building hasn't changed. Am I correct in saying that?
If I may, through the chair. The building at 33, I believe, has changed the configuration. They've added on to it, they've added on space, they've added on parking, which significantly impacts.
In the back with it.
At some point, they appeared here before the ZVA to discuss those changes to the building.
The building did change. The 33 Sword Street building did change. There used to be loading docks up front, four of them, that you were asking earlier, did they access those loading docks? The answer is yes, but those loading docks no longer exist, because they've remodeled the building and eliminated those loading docks and turned it into a showroom.
They, you say they. Was it the previous tenant or the applicant?
That's the FW Webb is the one who's, that's performing the renovation and the remodeling work.
And that remodeling is current? When did that start, the remodeling?
That was the whole basis for them submitting a site plan and getting the building permit.
So the building permit changes? The building permit would be the date they started, March?
Correct. And I just wanted to, because you had asked this before, one of the things that's important to understand is that when Imperial occupied the building, they simultaneously leased the 31 Sword Street property from AIDC, so they had the permissive use to go across our property, because they leased it.
That does actually address your previous question.
So that's how this whole thing was addressed when Imperial was there? In other words, they leased also 31 Sword Street?
That was your primary question previously.
Yeah.
Any other questions? John?
So to the Webb. How late did they open? Did they take delivery?
Do they take deliveries at night or, I mean, they could deliver, truck deliveries become at night where there'd be less traffic.
Yeah, I know the traffic study went till 7:00 PM, right?
Yes.
There's actually two charts that identify the time of day activity on page three or four in the text table, Table 2, which has the time periods. We started counting at 5:00 AM and ended it at 7:00 PM. And this only identifies the truck movements, not the vehicle movements that come to the building for other reasons.
Right, so the truck movement seems very minimal.
Right. That is correct, but the point of the truck count was to understand what are the current needs? And how does that reflect to their new site that they have at 33? Where we have identified six trucks, box trucks that would be using it at, especially before, before 7:00 AM, as well as two tractor-trailer trucks at the same time, which cannot be physically provided on their site. Which means they would have to be stacking somewhere else.
It looks like they're trying to get in there early and get out.
Right, but there's also activities throughout the day as well, where there could be a truck, a tractor-trailer truck in the dock that, Dock 1, that could be blocking access to and from the site. And it's, and they do have box truck activities throughout the day where that access would be needed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Did you have a follow-up, sir?
I just wanted to make sure that the board was clear on the easement versus lease permissive use. We use easement to grant somebody permission to use land. And an easement is typically recorded with a deed and it runs with the land. There is no easement existing prior to this lease. So it doesn't run with the land, it wouldn't go to the following tenant. So if they were using it, it was with permission under a lease or some other arrangement. And you'll see the property lines are clearly marked on these maps, which show the confined space that they have to deal with. And if they were to violate that line without some type of an easement or a lease or permissive use, that would constitute a trespass. So I just wanted to make sure the board was clear on the legal
Thank you for articulating that, yes. And just for the record, so there is no current easement under the current permit, understood?
Right, and so an easement like that would typically be recorded on the deed, current, it would run with the land. So there is nothing, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to close the public hearing? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a vote. Okay, so what we have before us, and I'm glad that we vetted specifically and give the applicant an opportunity to articulate what their challenge is with the issuance of this building permit. And it succinctly, in my view, is a challenge to the entirety of the site plan approval process in 9.4. And so I would open up to the board for any discussion or any motion on the applicant. And the motion before us, I would suggest, and by, just by, by approach of trying to be thorough, the applicant did in fact submit with Mr. Jones, I appreciate you walking through with the recommendations, and I appreciate you walking through these points, as I will tell you succinctly, I think that I would actually like the board to consider going in a slightly different direction. I think succinctly what's before us is whether or not we agree that this building permit should be rendered invalid. And I think that that's the vote before us.
I would agree with that, and I have some thoughts on that. I think that when we're being asked to overturn the granting of a permit, we're also being asked to find that the planning board erred. And I think that's outside the scope of our authority. I think that a finding that the planning board erred could only come from the Superior Court. So the, you know, this requisite finding, we just can't, we just lack the authority to do it. So as a result, I don't think that we can invalidate the permit. I don't mean to imply anything about the appellant's chances of success in other forums, but I just don't believe that this is a forum that can grant the remedy sought.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Cussin? This is tough, but I think I agree with Mr. Jones. I just, you know, I don't like to see things get tied up in court, but if need be. This is a tough one. I really
I appreciate your comments. Ms. Chaco, comments for the board to consider?
I would, I would also agree with what's just been stated. Let me throw this out. The, the main ask of the brief was that there was not a public hearing for a butters to speak at. The last paragraph on the first page, in other words, that supposedly because of the change, no public meeting was held to have any of butters speak on the issue. And that is what should have been scheduled under Sections 9, 3, 4 of your zoning bylaws, which is directly from the brief here on us. And then the next, that was on February 26th, where the planning board, they, they appeared before the planning board, and then on March 6th, subsequently, the building permit was issued. I guess if I were a judge sitting here, I'd say, so if they had a public meeting where people could voice their opinion, then that would have satisfied everything. Unfortunately, that's, that's not the case. But if that is the main ask within this brief, for us to invalidate a permit, a building permit, number one, I agree with the fact that I don't think we're empowered to overturn anything. But if we were empowered, I couldn't overturn it based upon that statement. That's the, that's the appellant's brief. So that if that was what was supposed to invalidate a permit, that was the premise, I certainly couldn't invalidate it based upon that. Prior to that, as I said though, I agree with the things that have just been said before me.
I do find the allegation of the trampling of due process rights alarming, but I, as I said before, I think we just lack the authority to overturn the zoning board.
Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen? Okay, I'll offer just a brief summary from my perspective, and I appreciate you all sharing. I think before us is a thoughtful approach to challenge the outcome of a site plan process, and by which they're seeking an articulate way to challenge that process. Not necessarily trying to predetermine, I think, things that have been mentioned this evening with regard to public safety are, I think, are important issues to raise. I think that from a thoughtful place, the applicant is seeking to try to make certain, in their view, that a project such as this is conducted correctly, and all the facets of safety, traffic inclusive, are addressed properly. And so I appreciate that approach. I would suggest, as I open this hearing, that I am challenged with seeing the bridge, albeit, I do appreciate the applicant sharing with me and articulating, not by law, but by process within the planning board, that their process is such that to determine major versus minor changes. And I think that there lies the crux of an argument that may be with the planning board's process and not this process. I do appreciate the authority that this board has to take a look at the building permit, but I would be in agreement with some of the other points that have been raised. I think the points that have been raised, 1 through 5, that are articulated in the brief, suggest, as you had suggested, Mr. Jones, things that we could potentially initiate if we were in favor of going in a direction for the applicant. And thereby, other actions would certainly be out of our responsibility that would pursue within the process. Okay, and so, without any additional discussion, is there a motion to be made for the applicant in the application for us to essentially invalidate and determine the building permit invalid?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to deny invalidating the building permit.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chaco, for the record. Mr. Cussin?
I think you need to second it.
Yeah, I would second.
Yes. All right, I mean to determine that you had to second it?
No.
Someone needed to second it?
No.
You're correct, so thank you. So certainly a point of order, so motion's been made and seconded to deny, and so seconded on your deny. Mr. Jones?
I agree it should be denied, but not on the merits of the due process argument.
All right, and?
I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
It should be denied, I vote to deny it, but not on the merits of the due process argument.
Okay, and so I'm going to follow the chair will also deny. And the reason for that, I will succinctly share, is that I do believe, as I open, that I think that the challenge here is with the planning board and their determination. I do want to also acknowledge, as we work in concert with all of our boards in town, that I respect their process and their decisions, and thereby, we would take that. So, gentlemen, our decision was unanimous to deny, and we would certainly leave it for you to make decisions on how you would like to move forward. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. So we do have a second applicant.
7:10.
We'll give, gentlemen, just a moment to clear the room.
They have waited such a long time.
They have, and so I'll offer apology for being seconded and waiting through that and their thoughtful patience. And so we have a second applicant this evening at 7:10. And so thank you for indulging me and just being thorough, but I do truly appreciate your patience. The applicant, Dana Berger, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing, requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.6.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow the operation of an auto sales and service business at the Aqua for 3 Zone on property located at 946 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 57, parcel 135. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so if I could take a motion, open the hearing?
Motion, open the hearing.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. So if you could approach, sir, and state your name for the record, thank you for your patience this evening.
Yes, sir, my name is Dana Berger.
Thank you, sir, and if you could just let us know what you'd like to accomplish.
Well, the reason I'm here is because I'm starting a business at 496 Washington Street in Auburn as a auto sales and minor repair business. I intend to call it dent and scratch, where I do paintless dent repair. I specialize in fixing dents on cars without any materials involved, no sprays, no harmful chemicals, no masking tape, no supplies. I just push the dents out from the inside. I've been doing it 18 years, mobile, on the road, and I'm settling down and trying to do it retail out of a brick and mortar now, finally.
Thank you very much. Anything else to add, sir?
As well, I want to learn how to sell some cars, and that's why I've leased this location to do that and sell some cars and do my paintless dent repair and minor touch-up paints. No spraying, not a body shop, nothing like that. Just paintless dent repair and touch-up paint and minor, I might take a panel off a car and fix it and put it back on a car, but no parts replaced or no waste or anything like that. No oil involved.
All right, thank you, sir, very much. So I'm going to go ahead and open it to the board for questions. Ms. Chaco?
No toxic chemicals?
Nope. No sprays, no toxic chemicals, worst I might do is wash a car.
Okay, do you, I just want to be sure you are aware of a statement that the chairman made at the beginning of our last hearing, because there are only four of us. It was so long since the beginning of that
I understand, sir.
I want to be sure that you understand that.
Mr. Chaco, I thank you for your courtesy, you're absolutely correct. And so as we have opened the hearing, I would offer the courtesy that if you would like to ask for a continuance based on the need for a super majority this evening for a vote affirmative?
I do understand, and I would hope that with no changes since current use to now, that nothing really would change.
Okay, so for the record, you are, you are willing to move forward with the current board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I want to make sure that that certainly is an option for you to exercise. Thank you, Mr. Chaco, very thoughtful, and I had, in haste of, in haste of getting the applicant before us because we've been so late in opening, I neglected to reiterate. Thank you.
How many cars do you plan to sell, and you'll still have to go get a license for that?
Correct, I'm in the license process as well. The parking lot is allowed 20 cars based on the site plan that exists. And at some point, I'd like to fill the lot. It won't start off with 20, obviously, it will start small, but as a startup business, that's where I need to be.
Very good. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaco. How many employees?
At this point, just me, in the future, possibly one more.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just to make sure I understand your brief to the board, it sounds like the impact to the area with the additional business will be next to nothing?
Next to nothing. As a matter of fact, I think that with the surrounding businesses, I could, we could all fee off each other.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, gentlemen? Okay, are there any butters or anyone else that would like to speak this evening? If you could approach, sir, state your name, please, and your comments?
My name is Matthew Dumas, and I own the property. I was actually here in 2016, if you remember, when we initially did the parking plan and I added the repair to it. It's been existing since 2016, and he's basically a new tenant that wants to rent the place. So nothing would change from what it has already been. It's a pre-existing licenses that are there right now already under Midstate Auto Group.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions, anyone in the audience?
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to remind the board, the special permit was granted to Mr. Dumas. The only reason this applicant's here before you is it wasn't conditioned to transfer. So I think it's more of a formality than anything. Unfortunately, the last special permit was issued to Mr. Dumas for a new operator to come in. It's just cleaner to issue the special permit to him, that would give us more, more authority to regulate that permit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that perspective very much. Motion to close the public hearing? I do not have any questions for the applicant, Ms. Chaco, so I do not have any questions for the applicant, Ms. Chaco, so the chair would absolutely agree. Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so is there a motion before?
I would make a motion to grant special permit based upon normal conditions.
Second.
Mr. Jones, second. And Ms. Cussin?
I grant.
And the chair would grant as well, so it is certainly unanimous for approval, and so we'll grant with the normal conditions that we would grant in such a, in such a case. So good luck to you and...
Thank you very much.
Good luck, thanks for being here. Thanks for your patience.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, so that concludes our, so if we have the motion to close?
Do we have any, do we have, nothing to sign?
We closed. We closed the hearing, so we're, and we voted, so we don't have to close.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So that's all the hearings before us, and so I do think that we have some signatures this evening.
To the chair, that we do not.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Probably be at the next meeting.
All right, very good. So we don't have any signatures and no other business to tackle this evening, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.